Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Special Health Committee meeting for Wednesday, June 28th. We are somewhat behind schedule. It is 9:45. I am calling the meeting to order. As we gather this morning, I wish to acknowledge on behalf of committee and our community that we are meeting on traditional territory of the Algonquin Nation. We thank the Algonquin people and express our respect and support for their rich history. We're extremely grateful for their many and continuing displays of friendship. We thank also all the generations of people who have been careful stewards of this land for millennia. Ms. Hill, has the role been called, please? [S02] Yes, Mr. Chair, it has been taken. And quorum is here. [S02] Quorum is here. Thank you. We have established quorum. I would invite now disclosure of pecuniary interest in, if any, the general nature thereof. Chair recognizes none. We will go directly into the emergency services report. Chief Nolan, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just, would you like me to provide some context before I read the recommendation, Mr. Chair?
Actually, we'll read the recommendation and then perhaps context we can incorporate into the background. When you read the resolution, I will seek a mover and a seconder, and then we'll return the floor to yourself, chief.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So through you to members of committee. In relation to the Sierra Team marine capability purchase of rescue watercraft, is a recommendation that the Health Committee recommend that county council approve the reallocation of paramedic services capital funds to cover the purchase of the SuperDax Survivor 1800 rescue watercraft at a total cost or at a cost of $11,500 and deferring the purchase of a paramedic UTV. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Wilmer was escaping me there briefly, and seconded by Counselor Yon. Back to you for the background or and/or context, Chief Nolan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in lieu of reading the background to members of committee, I think the overarching context as it relates to this recommendation is that for many, many years, the paramedics have had to rely upon other agencies where watercraft is available or for laypersons to be able to carry out their duties as a paramedic, especially given the number of lakes and rivers that we have within the county. And as well, there are considerations as it pertains to ice rescue and providing care, as is the case with the Sierra Team and the side-by-side, as you recall. Part of the scenario is certainly having the transport capability for a patient. We're also as concerned in our past lack of capability of being able to insert paramedics to a patient in distress in a timely and reliable way. So a big part of this is a risk management exercise for us, and we've had a number of circumstances of late, certainly in Greater Matawaska, being able to adequately support the fire efforts of the Greater Matawaska Fire Department and tiered response agencies and the MNRF, and then more recently at Garrison, Petawawa. So we saw an opportunity to acquire a former city of Cornwall boat used for this purpose at a very low cost, and our intention is to use the funds that were previously allocated for UTV. So therefore, the recommendation pertains to the fact that we're going to reallocate funds that were previously identified within the paramedic service budget this year, but do it in a way that gives us a marine capability that has predictability and allows us to standardize our response, not only on the lakes and rivers, but also in support of our allied agencies. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, chief. Very comprehensive overview. Committee, any questions, comments? I will go first to Counselor Murphy, then to Warden Emo.
Thank you, Chair. I think this is an amazing initiative, and you said your allied partners, I assume that does include our local tier fire departments, as most of us do not have water rescue. We're only on shore.
That, Mr. Chair, that's correct. We'd be happy to support our fire services as well. On occasion, as we've seen during significant events such as the Derrico and major weather events, there's often multiple requests for service on our waterways throughout the county, so in support of our fire services, police services, and as well the MNRF and Parks Ontario, who have come up big for us recently. We've had to borrow their assets, so they've driven boats to us from Algonquin Park simply to be able to provide service. So we'll be happy to support all of them.
Thank you, chief. Warden Emo.
Thank you. I think it's, I think this is a good way of easing into it and finding whether this is the proper piece of equipment, you know, at a reasonable price, and if there's anything else that needs to be done. So, and I, as, you know, as much as we've been able to beg, borrow, and steal from our partners, you know, and we're certainly appreciative of that, I think the familiarity of having your own, your own equipment and training on it and getting used to the nuances of it is very important, and I think it will add to the efficiency of our responses. So supportive of this. It's a cost-effective way of easing into this mode of servicing our clients in an emergency, and it makes sense. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Counselor Nicholson.
Thanks, Chair. I'll just echo the comments of both the warden and Counselor Murphy. I completely support this, and being surrounded by water with a lake, I can appreciate the necessity for it, especially for our, the partners within the county. And I would, I know that the warden said ease into it. I recognize this as a capability I believe we need to have, and yes, use this as an opportunity to ease in to buy the right piece of equipment, but let's asset management, let's plan to replace this with the right craft when is, when is required, and ensure that's in our budgets going forward. So that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Nicholson. Counselor Lefrenier.
Yes, thank you. I think it's great. City of Pembroke has had marine rescue for quite some time under the fire department, so really nice to see this extended out into the county. And I mean, like you say, we are a county of waters, and I mean, it only makes sense that the more assets we have, the quicker we could respond and maybe be a lot, you know, more effective. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? I think perhaps to distill all of the comments that have been here today, I think one of the gaps for the paramedic service has been the water. When I spoke just earlier, just prior to coming to order with the chief, I said typically in my experience, there is no such thing as coincidence, that things always have a relation. And I was in fact inquiring if, if both the fire in Greater Matawaska and the unfortunate tragedy in Petawawa were some of the impetus behind this, and in fact, they were. And I think that this points out the gap that existed there. The other thing that we're all very much aware of, and Counselor Lefrenier, certainly thank you for your comments, in that the paramedic service is really the only pan Renfrew County service, emergency service. And I think that consistent with the Sierra Team more broadly, we are and have been for some time, marketing, highlighting the tremendous advantage that we have here in Renfrew County, the Ottawa Valley, of the wilderness playground. And I think it is vitally important that as we are inviting our community to venture into the wilderness for their recreation, that we be prepared at every step of that to ensure that they can have the safety and security. So I think this, as the warden has suggested, I think that this is the initial template, the, the proof of concept, if you will. So I think that it is eminently supportable. If there is nothing further, I will call the question. All in favor. That is carried. Thank you. Item, back to you for bylaws, then, Chief Nolan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, item number two on today's report, a recommendation that Health Committee recommend that county council adopt a bylaw authorizing the warden and CAO clerk to sign an agreement between the County of Renfrew and Ontario Health for funding to support the Renfrew County Virtual Triage and Assessment Center for the term of April 1, 2023, ending March 31, 2024. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, chief. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Murphy, seconded by Warden Emo. Back to you, Chief Nolan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as a matter of background, that the Renfrew County Virtual Triage and Assessment Center has been supporting residents of Renfrew County through an innovative community-based hybrid model of in-person and virtual care. The program focuses on respiratory care and other primary care related issues. So there is an attachment to the funding agreement within the report today, and that it supports the funding in the amount of $3,100,000 for the fiscal year of April 1, 2023 to March 31, 2024. And as a matter of context, Mr. Chair, I think it's also important to note, for those of you that remember Minister, or MPP Yakubusky's confirmation of permanent funding for the VTAC program at $3.2 million. The reason that this funding is coming across at $3.1 million is that we've backed out $100,000 for a third-party evaluation that will be administered through Ontario Health so that it can continue to support the important role that VTAC plays and be able to support further policy development within the province for the expansion of VTAC to other communities that are having similar challenges. Of important note that this is only for the administrative medical secretary, paramedic functions, as well as the telephony system, I believe it's called, Counselor Murphy, and that in being able to provide the backend infrastructure, we're currently in negotiations, negotiations with the Ministry of Health regarding the physician compensation model, and I hope to be able to provide an update by week's end because the assessment center funding H-codes are terminating on July 1st.
Thank you, chief. Ultimately, as VTAC was initially, and we often described it as so, we were designing and building the airplane as we were flying it. So we're enormously grateful for Armpire Regional Health and the Armpire Regional Family Health Team, that were an integral role in the standing up of VTAC in the, in confronting the initial wave of COVID, and this is ultimately repatriating, if you will, back to the county, that role of, of the banker, if you will, and the administrative role on, as the chief has suggested, stopping just right up until the physicians, at which point that that is a different segment. So enormously pleased as we're moving forward, consistent with, as the chief has said, the confirmation by Mr. Yakubusky that in fact VTAC is going to be a permanently funded part of healthcare, certainly here, and I anticipate to be expanded much more broadly across the province as, as we are given to be quite boastful of what this, this agency, what this operation has done for the residents of this community. Anything further? Seeing nothing. All in favor. That is carried. Thank you. So that is the end of the emergency services report. Could I please have a motion to accept the emergency services report? Counselor Wilmer, seconded by Counselor Lefrenier. Further final opportunity for a question on either item. Seeing none. All in favor. That is carried. Thank you. I would now seek a motion to go into a closed meeting pursuant to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended for the purpose of (a) personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, staffing agencies; (b) information supplied in confidence to the municipality by another level of government, that is with respect to RCVTAC; and finally, (c) labor relations, union negotiations. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Yon, seconded by Counselor Purcell. All in favor. That is carried. Thank you. We are in closed session. We will provide a moment. We will provide a moment. We are in closed session, we will provide a moment.
We have concluded all of the business for the special health committee for today.